It's already.
So it's small.
Okay. A little early, but not bad. We'll call the recall open session, the school board of Amory. And first thing on the agenda here in open session is a spotlight on education.
Okay. Are you ready for your introduction?
No? It's got notes, so.
You gotta find my notes. Okay. All right, I'll handle the spotlight on education. We have Steve Norlander here. At least stand up and let us see who you are. The Wisconsin Association of School Business Officials, Steve has been selected as one of the four recipients in the state for the WASBO 2021 Custodian Maintenance Employee of the Year. The award recognizes outstanding contribution to school district of Amory, your community, and to your profession, and to the students and staff you work with. Your leadership improves facilities and school safety while improving student learning. Take a moment to reflect on your accomplishments and take pride in your contributions, loyalty, and dedication for your years of service to the school district of Amory. So congratulations to Steve Norlander. Do you have a speech for us? You do not have a speech for us.
This is the spotlight.
Yeah, your spotlight. So.
How long have you been in the district?
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years.
Good. And you're gonna stay here awhile.
End of June? That's not awhile.
Didn't say what year.
He didn't say, didn't say what year. I got a text message after her departure from Oralie Shock, intermediate school principal who worked with Steve as the entirety of his time in district. And she said, "He better be recognized at a board meeting. He is so worth it." And that's coming from the top dog of top dogs at the intermediate school. She feels very strongly about your work, and I know you felt strongly about your years that you worked with her. So from afar, Oralie is congratulating you as well. All righty.
Well, I just wanted to say thanks, because you know, a lot of times people just don't realize the unsung heroes that you guys really are in this school district or any school. It's so important for our kids to have a clean, wonderful environment for them to learn in. It's important for their education. And what you guys do is nothing short of just really, I've been to a lot of districts around, and our school is always very well kept up and just, it always looks immaculate. These kids come in every day to something that's a clean environment, and it's super, super important. The impact that you have on their education is far beyond measure. So, thank you very much. It's an accomplishment.
Yes, yes. The smile is welcome. A lot of kids.
And I've seen you go above and beyond, you know, being in this building, and you know, that you are just willing to jump in and, you know, "I need a stool because I'm doing the bulletin boards out here," or whatever it is. Different things that I'm asking for and looking for, and you have always just been willing to help and haven't made me feel like I'm interrupting your work. I'm sure I am. But I think, you know, that you've gone above and beyond, which is what this award is recognizing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I just have to mention, Steve, way back, we used to do some negotiations together, if you remember. But I just want to say you were such a class act to work with, and it was a pleasure. I mean, as good as those conversations can be, but truly just a class act for the, for the district, so congratulations.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, next we will go on to our consent agenda items.
And I had those for this month. Vouchers looked all in order and took things over, so I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Okay, and second?
Second, Ben.
Char, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Okay. Now, we're gonna move on to community comments. We have a couple of folks here, so I'll read the guidelines for addressing the school board. Welcome to this meeting of the Board of Education of the School District of Amory. We are pleased that you are interested in school district education issues. Your input may be very beneficial to the development of appropriate educational programs. You may address the board only during the community comments time on the agenda. Amory School District residents, district employees, and guests invited by the board may address the board at the discretion of the presiding board member. In order for the meeting to flow smoothly, we would appreciate the following guidelines be followed by anyone wishing to address the Board of Education. For those wishing to speak before the board, a sign up sheet will be available prior to the start of the meeting. If the topic noted on the sign up sheet is deemed to be out of order, the presiding board member will inform the person wishing to speak prior to the start of the meeting. Common time is limited to five minutes per person. However, the time limit may be increased or decreased at any time by the presiding board member. Time allocated for community comments may be ended at the determination of the presiding board member. Comments and suggestions related to school district operation are welcome. Personal criticism of members of the Board of Education or employees of the Amory School District is out of order. Please stand to be recognized. After being recognized, give your name and address for the record. The board normally receives citizen input and does not respond or debate. If there is a need for an answer or response to a concern or issue, the district administrator or one of the other administrators may get back to you within the week. If your concern requires board action, it may be placed on the agenda of a future board meeting. And I'd like to thank you for your cooperation. So the first one up we have is Brian Balos?
Balog.
Balog, okay, thank you.
Get up here.
Yep.
Sorry, I haven't been long.
Here, you get to use the microphone.
My name's Brian Balog. I live at 330 Johnson Street, Amory.
If you can adjust the mic if you.
Yeah.
You have to bend down, yeah.
Okay. We pulled our kids out of this school because of the mask mandate. At some point, I would like my kids to come back to this school and get an education. But I can't send them back here because we don't know where you guys stand. We sent, they sent out the surveys, clearly was in no masks favor. You guys disregarded it like we didn't even exist. The people in this room, your community, your fellow community, you just disregarded that. And I know that you guys are gonna go to some point saying whatever the local, state, or federal officials say is probably what you're gonna go with. But they don't run the Amory School District. You guys run the Amory. I don't know if it's an interest in money or you're worried they'll hold back financing. We do your guys' budget. You guys get your budget from these people in this room, including yourselves. That's on us. And you guys didn't even listen to us last time when it came through last year. So I would like to send my kids back here at some point. I mean, the death rate for COVID for a kid of school age is 198 deaths nationwide. There's more deaths than that in a year from car accidents, yet you drive them around, don't you? You guys do, correct? I'm guessing you all drive your kids wherever they need to go. You're not afraid to put them in a car, but you wanna put a mask on them. Muslim, what's it do for their social, their social well-being of learning? Most of language is done from the body and not from the mouth. That's, I mean, you're covering that whole aspect. I would love to send my kids to this school. It's a great school. But I can't under those conditions. So I just really consider, you guys are us. You're part of us, this whole community. We take care of each other, and you disregarded us last time. Don't let it happen again. Just remember that. The majority of the vote said we didn't want them. And I would like to send my kids back here. So thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And now we have Morgan Olson. Morgan?
Hi, I am Morgan Olson, 501 South Street West Deer Park. This past week, I believe Friday, I sent out an email to the board members and Mr. Durfler and Becky, kind of addressing some of my concerns. And Char did respond, and she did tell me that the mask decision had already been determined due to the guideline with the meetings and having to have two meetings to reinstate the mask mandate. So I do thank you for reemphasizing that. But I would like to read what I had written so that some of the principals get to hear this too, and Mr. Baumgartner. I probably slaughtered that, sorry. So first of all, I really appreciate what the board has done in an attempt to keep the students from getting COVID. But I also have things I would like considered, especially with their mental health and emotional learning. I could flood you with resources, but I know that none of us actually has the time for that, so I'm selecting a few key pieces that I feel are important to emphasize. One of the first concepts is social-emotional learning. This is based off five targeted skills: self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. Having a child who is severely autistic, it concerns me that he went entire school year, eighteen months, without being able to see his staff smile at him. They couldn't see him frown, or he couldn't see them frown when he was doing something that they disapproved of. That bothers me. He may only be eleven, but he has the mind of a toddler, one that can be very physical and over-emotional. We tell ourselves that we can tell if a person is smiling behind their mask, but that's not entirely true. Observing happiness and playfulness is important to children, just as important as it is to learning to understand disappointment on someone's face. Facial coverings do not help our children who cannot read social cues. This is especially important for our elementary school students who are learning how to respond to others. Germs. First, let me say that I am extremely bothered by the mass use of hand sanitizer. This should be used as a last resort. We should be teaching our children how to wash their hands and use sanitizer in emergency situations. Germs are critical to life as they assist our immune system. Exposure is necessary, especially in non-winter months, so that our immune systems have time to build up an immunity before cold and flu season hit. Virus exposures also aid our immune system. If we don't have the chance to fight off, naturally fight off illnesses such as the cold or the flu, how can we expect that our immune system will be able to fight COVID? Absolutely not. I sought out peer-reviewed studies, and although the study I chose here was from 2015, I assure you the science has not changed. The study, and this is in quotations, "The study found respiratory infection was much higher among healthcare workers wearing cloth masks. The penetration of cloth masks by particles was almost 97% compared to medical masks with 44%." End quote. That's from the University of New South Wales, from 2021. Masks are not necessary, and I think it is time that we acknowledge that, especially after it was openly admitted that PCR tests could not differentiate between COVID variations or strains and the flu. How many of our children were forced into quarantine because they actually were in contact with somebody who had the flu? We'll never know, but the last eighteen months have been ridiculous. Straight from the CDC, quote, "CDC encourages laboratories to consider adoption of multiplexed method that can facilitate detection and differentiation of SARS-CoV-2 and influenza viruses. Such assays can facilitate continued testing for both influenza and SARS-CoV-2 and save more time and resources as we head into the influenza season." End quote. CDC, 2021. Anthony Fauci has even admitted through email correspondence numerous times, quote, "Masks are really for infected people to prevent them from spreading infection to people who are not infected rather than protecting uninfected people from acquiring infection." He wrote, "The typical mask you buy in the drugstore is not really effective at keeping out viruses, which is small enough to pass through the material." End quote. Then I have another one. Another deleterious health effect is due to the increased amount of bacteria and fungi that the masks retain. While the pore sizes of the N95 masks, or the gold standard for masks, is as low as .30 micrometers, the size of the COVID-19 virus is less than half of that at .12 micrometers and smaller. Bacteria and fungi are much larger, so those microbes that should be exhaled are retained. A phenomenon is surfacing, some dentists are calling mask mouth, characterized by receding gums, halitosis, and cavities. Masks are encouraging our children to live in a constant state of fear. Let's ponder what their thought processes are on a daily process. "I can't breathe this air, or it'll make me sick or kill me. I'm going to get in trouble for not having my mask on. I hate this thing, but the adults are making me put it over my face," are the thoughts that probably have gone through many of our children over the past year. Children must come first. When it comes to kids, masks are bad for the mind, body, and spirit. Let adults protect themselves as they see fit, and let parents decide whether a mask is appropriate for their children. I think we need to recognize the data available, and this was when I wrote it Friday. When you look at Polk County's dashboard, it shows countywide there are only 59 people currently infected with COVID. This is hardly the information the news that is pushed out to us from mainstream media. We are teaching our, oh, sorry, Polk County has roughly 43,500 residents, and only 59 of them were positive at the time of writing. We're teaching our children to live in that constant state of fear and to shut up and comply. Where is the encouragement for free thinking? This is very unhealthy for our children. Fear from the media is controlling the life of the general population. I am willing to bet that some of the high school students have probably thought, or even found research on the concept of mask-wearing and how it is not that good for you. And they probably thought, "Well, what good is it gonna do? We're just supposed to do what we're told." Do we really think that our children who do what they are told and are ever gonna solve medical breakthroughs in the future? Could our students go on to cure AIDS, cancer, SIDS, type 1 diabetes, autism, et cetera? We'll never know if we keep stifling their free thinking and forcing them to conform. Lastly, I think that just about everyone has seen the argument that's been on YouTube lately with that doctor advocating against masking. If you haven't, YouTube keeps removing it. Feel free to email me. I have the link for you. And it had all of his references, but it's a doctor that has virology and immunology history, and he basically said that the masks are not effective for our students. So that's basically all I have. I know the decision has been made. It's a little too long for a letter to the editor, but I just wanted the general public that came to meetings to understand that there are many of us who, like the previous speaker said, you know, we all filled out the surveys and our responses fell on deaf ears, which is very disheartening. And yes, like he said, you know, we get information from the state, and we get information from the county on how to handle health protocols. But mandates are just that. They are not official law. So forcing our children to mask up is not effective. And I encourage you to continue to review the statistics and the data within our county and within our school board before going back to making a decision to mask up this winter when viruses start coming out again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Morgan. That is it for our community comments. Next will be the administrative reports.
All right, lots of things going on at the high school since we last were connected. As of today, all fall sports are officially going, and we actually had a home tennis match going on today, so everything is rolling there. We have several new enrolled students at the high school. We're up 22 new students since the end of the school year at the high school. Yeah, so some big numbers. Band trip, a couple weeks ago, huge success, huge success. A big thanks to Mrs. Rhodes Lundgren for all the hard work and trying to make this happen. The chaperones who helped out, just a huge thank you to all of them. As someone who had a kid that did go on the trip, the text messages kept coming back, "Dad, I'm having the time of my life," and I hope that every kid had that same experience. So that was wonderful. As a high school staff, we had a number of people, and actually each of the principals had teams involved in a district data retreat that Mr. Tom Benson put on last week. He's smarter than any DAC person in the state of Wisconsin, and we're very fortunate to have him, and I remind him of that all the time, or make fun of him. I don't know which one it is. But it was a great day, and all the buildings had a great, did a great job of diving in and taking advantage of the data that we had available to us as we make decisions going forward on our classes and our curriculum. I want to give a congratulations to Koi Hopki, another wrestling achievement. He won the Triple Crown recently at what's referred to as the Fargo Nationals Wrestling Tournament. He won national titles in folk style, which is the traditional wrestling that we see here in high school, freestyle, and Greco-Romanian twin. All three is very impressive. He's done this multiple times, but that shouldn't diminish the fact that he's, I mean, it's still very impressive. Want to give a couple more shout outs to Mr. Derek Meyer, recognized for his Teacher of the Year Award, and he was able to throw out a first pitch at a Brewer game in late July. And he also is going to be recognized at the Twins Brewers game in the Twin Cities here in a couple of weeks. He doesn't get, doesn't get to throw out a pitch that time, but he does get to go out on the field. And that's for a different award, not related to Teacher of the Year. Along that same lines, Amory FFA had a memorable and successful state FFA convention on Madison. For the third time in Amory FFA history, they qualified all seven speaking contests for the national contest. And I think if I remember correctly, 18 individuals are going off to Nationals in Indianapolis this fall. So the bar of excellence continues with our FFA. Building updates, the gym floor is basically complete. It is, it is beautiful, and we can't wait to show it off. Just a couple little finishing touches on it, and we should be ready to host our first volleyball game in there, hopefully in about two weeks. Just a couple little things that need to happen. The summer cleaning projects are nearly complete. I can't say enough about our summer custodial staff. They've done just an amazing job all year, and the building is pretty much ready. As you drove in today, you probably saw that the library through-wall flashing project is, is nearly complete. It looks beautiful on the outside. We've got some concrete work to do, but it's looking very nice. Future events, we've got new teacher workshop for the district on August 23rd. All teachers back, of course, on the 24th. At the high school, we'll do freshman orientation on August 26th. And just a reminder to everybody, if you want to take in some of our sports here at the high school, those, you can find the calendar on our district webpage. And lots of exciting things for our students and our athletes.
The new district webpage.
Yeah.
Yes.
Tracy Hendrickson did another wonderful job, wherever she is. It is beautiful and updated. Yeah, it looks great. Tom?
Very good. All right, well, as Josh said, we went through a data retreat district-wide. The majority of the staff got a chance to look at some of the new data that's coming out in a much different fashion than before. But like we said, it's been a little spotty because we didn't have a test the year before. And then some districts tested all their kids like we did, and some tested very small amount of their kids. So we're trying to weed through exactly how to decipher everything, but we did, at the middle school, set two new goals based off of some of the trend data that we're looking at. So we're excited to get that work done. As Josh said, we're busy adding kids. I've added 16 new kids, and I've had five move away, so we're about plus 11 right now at the middle school. If you considered everyone that I was expecting as we rolled over. Cleaning in my building is also moving along really quickly. We've had some new carpet replaced, which has been great. Flooring's being redone. Should be done soon. By the way, I want to go in there. It looks really nice, the new system. It's different than we've ever done before, and it looks amazing. I'm really, really excited about it. And we just have one little patch left, so I want to thank Billy for his work there. Sixth grade orientation at the middle school is coming up. We're on the 24th. And that is sixth grade orientation for all new sixth graders, and then seventh and eighth grade open house. And we run from 4:30 to 6:30, and there's some timelines, and those have all been mailed out. But that'd be a nice chance to, to get back to see all the kids and get the year rolling. As Josh said, we're excited for school to start. August 31st will be our all-school orientation day where all the students can come, and we'll be going over back-to-school things, having some really fun activities for kids. They'll be going through their schedule, meeting all the teachers, going over expectations. We'll be doing Warrior Way Celebration and kind of covering expectations for being responsible and respectful and safe. And then we'll be taking student pictures, and so there's a lot of fun things that day. And then our first official day of class is September 1st. So other than that, you know, the year will bring with it a lot of, of activities. Most of the middle school sports don't really kick in until after school has started, but we'll should have a full array of sports moving forward and other student activities. And, and then our big thing coming up is the big Fall Festival Parade where we'll figure out exactly where they're marching, because I'm not sure which one I would have done. But it should be happening. I know it'll happen somewhere, and those kids will do a great job.
The intermediate school is starting to be a very busy place, which is nice to see. The elementary and intermediate school, we are still working on our ELA adoption, so pre-K through grade five. We do have it narrowed down to two different companies, American Reading Company and then CKLA Amplify. Teresa Stanley from CISA 11 will be coming on the last day of teacher in-service to work with half at the Leon, half the day at Leon, and then half of the day at the intermediate school, looking at the rubric that we've created and how those programs align with our needs in the new curriculum. Popsicles with a Principal was a hit. That was last Tuesday on the playground here. There was probably about 300 popsicles served. Forty of those were probably my own children' athos. But the turnout was really great. It was nice to see some wonderful, familiar faces. Many of them I recognized, and they're very excited for school to start. As Tom and Josh had both mentioned, we had our data retreat. There was great conversation. The intermediate school also developed two new academic goals moving forward that we will strive to meet. I hosted staff one-on-one meetings, so in the month of July, I opened it up for staff to schedule a time with me and come in, and I will say probably two-thirds of the intermediate school staff came in and sat down with me one-on-one, and we talked about their family and their path to education and how we can continue the tradition of excellence here at the intermediate school. And it went really, really well. Summer curriculum work, the PBIS committee has met several times. We're actually meeting tomorrow to discuss some changes that we have coming up just in our celebration schedule. My PAC leadership team has come in several times just to talk about the school year and some challenges that we think we might face. Fastbridge is our new assessment system, so all staff within the building have either completed or are in the process of completing the modules to get certified for the benchmark. completed or are in the process of completing the modules to get certified for the benchmark assessment system. And then last, new staff mentoring is happening. Like I said, the halls are starting to fill with teachers and excitement, and we're excited to welcome the students back.
First grade enrollment has gone up. So at Leon Elementary School, we have 34 new students, four have left. So, and of course, of those 34, 10 of them were in first grade, so we are adding a section to first grade. I met with my kindergarten teachers today. They helped me reshuffle kids, and we're interviewing tomorrow, so hopefully by tomorrow afternoon, I'll be able to notify families if their child is being moved. It's a beautiful, a beautiful problem to have. Increased enrollment, isn't that wonderful? With that being said, however, there is no more space at Leon Elementary School. I have my new psych working out of a shower room and our, we have other staff that are working in little nooks and crannies, so Leon Elementary School is full. But again, that's a beautiful problem to have. As mentioned by my administrative friends, our data meeting was wonderful. I agree with Josh. Tom is the most excellent DAC in the state of Wisconsin.
Oh, they're setting you up for something.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Beginning of the year is going to be rough for you.
It was, it was very good. He really walked us through the process. We, you know, every year, we've had the Badger Test, we've had the Forward Test, the WKCE, and so everything changes, so it's all new. And he did, he did a fabulous job of explaining the new report card that you're all going to see in October. So thanks to Tom. I, I do want to say though, that at Leon Elementary School, data is an ongoing thing that we look at in our PLCs every week. We have an hour dedicated to that. And I can't say enough about the staff. They look at the data weekly, they make instructional decisions. So a data retreat is good. It's not as good for the elementary school as it is for the other buildings because they all have forward data, where we really have very little. We do look at third grade, however, but, but it was wonderful. It, it was great to have Tom be our leader through that. So thank you, Mr. Benson. A special thank you, this is the Benson night tonight. A special thank you to the high school student, Megan Novak, who painted the ceiling of our gazebo on the elementary playground under the direction of Lisa Benson, our school counselor. The gazebo and surrounding area is part of our, our playground peacemaking process that we're trying to create a little area where kids can resolve problems. And they've been taught peacemaking for several years, but it will now be a spot on our playground. So that's pretty exciting. It's all part of our PBIS intervention and support program. The elementary meet and greet is Wednesday, August 25th, from 3 o'clock to 4:30. Families can bring in school supplies, meet their teachers, walk around the school, and turn in their paperwork to the office if necessary. Our fabulous Parents as Partners are sponsoring an ice cream sundae with toppings, and we will be collecting a free will offering will be available to support the Parents as Partners. With that being said, the new playground, very much supported by the Parents as Partners budget, has been installed. The playground purchased, the purchase was through Bowlin Recreation. It's an obstacle course of sorts. It has seven individual pieces of equipment with very unique names, such as the Chaos Climber, Breakaway, Taper Tower, Boulder Ridge, Sprawl Wall, Orbit Climber, and Crossway Climbers. The pea gravel was delivered today, but it's not spread out. We're hoping by the end of this week, it will be ready for children to play on, but it's going to be a big hit for the opening of the school year. So we're encouraging families to visit our playground, along with the outdoor classroom that's back there and our newly painted gazebo. And just to second what Josh said about our custodial staff, Leon Elementary School, as you are all aware, did not have air conditioning this summer. For me, that was a gift because I'm always cold, but for them working as hard as they do, and I've told George 100 million times, the elementary school is the most difficult of housing to clean, right, George? Because we have all the extra stuff, toys and tables and shelves and, anyway, they cleaned and worked so hard with a smile on their face, and I, there's so many kudos to them. It was a fabulous summer, really. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Well, specialty, this is an exciting time of year. It's always a moving target, right? So we send out a lot of, setting up all your schedules and, you know, there's IEP meetings or trainings for your staff, especially in special education. There's criteria, things change, and as, as much as you predict the, some of the changes and you can learn about some things and prepare for them, it's always interesting because you know that there's going to be questions and things that are going to be new. So this year is no different. We will continue to have monthly spec ed collaboration meetings district-wide. A lot of our staff have been doing some training over the summer, whether it's curriculum prep, researching, reading curriculum at the high school to, for students with functional skills. We've done interventions for speech and speech referrals, particularly for interventions and the response to intervention process. Our new psych and existing psych attended evaluation training along with six other newer to district staff, all around special education evaluation process. We had our behavior, parent educator, teacher, and general ed teacher do a positive approach to student success training designed to better inform and support kids with challenging behaviors. Then there's individual IEP meetings that have already started up of those difficult transitions or grade level transitions, and then just individual meet and greets for students who are open and rolling. So again, always a moving target, but it's always a busy and fun time of year. Then also, just want to let you know, in-service will be, of course, all our staff will be having training. For the second consecutive year, our special education paras will be participating in a training. And it's really just to onboard new paras. There's some turnover in that, that sector of our personnel, and we want to make sure that, you know, they feel supported, they know what they're doing, coming in on day one, or if they don't know what to do, that they have a mentor and somebody that they can ask and get some help with. So we're excited to do that. And I'm also excited to partner with, in the past, we've kind of had our former teacher lead that training. This year, I'm going to participate in leading that training along with Eileen Flatt, who's been a longtime special ed parent educator here, and for those of you that know her, she just, anything that will support kids, she will do, participate in, excel at. So I just thought that she was a great person and really excited to be presenting alongside her with that parent group. And then finally, training, training, nonviolent crisis intervention, which will kind of leak into my next section of the report tonight for the administrative report for seclusion and restraint support. But we do this training, you know, every year, early August, we have a Crisis Prevention Institute. We've got three staff that are certified and trained as a trainer, trainer model, so they go out and they get two, three-day trainings of nonviolent crisis intervention, and they come back and they're certified people who can out-train up our staff in de-escalation techniques and, you know, safe physical interventions if needed options. So it's very important training, and we also have the ability with those in-house trainers as people come on in the year to get trained or just ask questions if things come up. So it's a good resource to have in our district, and to have three of them is even better for a district of this size. That concludes my report. I think I'm next on the agenda.
Yep.
Do you have anything?
Nope. Go ahead, Brad.
All right. So here we have, you'll see this pretty familiar because we do this every year. Maybe next year, I'm going to change the color here and maybe the font. But a lot of this will be familiar to you, okay? So this is not new. This is from actually 2011, Wisconsin Act 125 came into existence. All right. And the application of this rule, this state statute, is for all students. So regardless of the special ed 504, regular ed, this covers everyone here in the district who's a student. And it also applies to all staff, any covered individuals. There's a, there's a list, but substitute teachers, pretty much anyone working in our buildings, independent contractors, and more recently, within the past three years or so, law enforcement will also cover as an individual under this act. So the definitions of physical restraint, so we know what we're all talking about here when we look at the report, the numbers, is a restriction that mobilizes or reduces the ability of a student to freely move, is her torso, arms, legs, or head. Seclusion is the involuntary confinement of the student apart from others in a room or area from which the student is physically prevented from leaving. So an important element to both of these that you look at is the duration. Oftentimes, if, you know, if the restraint is used and it is only two seconds, we report those. So one that meets the requirement is per the definition, but then also there's not a time limit here. So sometimes when you look at the data, that those, you know, one restraint could be half a second, could be one second, two seconds. All right. So the use of physical restraint is only when a student's behavior presents a clear, present, imminent risk to the physical safety of the student or to others. In training, we talk a lot about this word imminent. You know, when you look in the dictionary, something is going, highly likely going to happen if I don't intervene by stopping the student from running into a parking lot, for example, right? By, you know, holding a student briefly before, you know, they're physically aggressed against another student or a teacher. So the reporting requirements come in here. Each year at the start of the new school year, I am the designated here for the school district Amory, so I will submit this report to the board, and then we also follow up with reporting these to the state through a DPI website, and they're able to pull those, and you can look back throughout many districts, all districts in Wisconsin, to look at these numbers. So what are we reporting here? The number of incidents of seclusion and physical restraint in the previous year, the total number of students involved in the incidents, and the total number of students with disabilities involved in the incidents. That's what you're going to see. Next, the purpose of the recording, recording requirements really is so we can learn from the numbers, right? So ensure training, which we've just talked about, evaluate all our trauma-sensitive schools practices and our training needs. So here you see the numbers, and 33, which I think is the same as last year for our incidences of seclusion, and 50, which is a little higher than the previous year reported. But if you look at the number of students, it's 11 students total throughout the district. When you look at the student of, the number for students with disabilities, that 10 number, those are individual students, is less than half of 1% of any student with a disability in the district. So, you know, the ratio is, is pretty small when we look at it overall. We are, if you look at state data, I think it's 50%, 47% of students, excuse me, of schools overall have reported no seclusion and restraint data. So that means that 53% of all schools in Wisconsin have some record of seclusion and restraint, so we're in the larger half of that number as well, which is not to be expectable, Training requirements, we talked about this a little bit, but this is our Crisis Prevention Institute training. We, it covers identifying, you know, dangerous behavior, the need for physical restraint, how to escalate, or how to de-escalate students that may be experiencing trauma or have an imminent risk to themselves or others. Then also, kind of the physical and emotional, psychological stresses and trauma that are results from physical restraint or seclusion. And then we also hit on the documenting and reporting of incidents of physical restraint and seclusion. And of course, you don't need to look far to see all sorts of data there on the explanation of prohibited maneuvers and holds, which are mainly those prone restraints, which are not best practice anywhere. So we do those reporting requirements on each of those areas. So CPI, I've mentioned this, focus on de-escalation and managing risk, right? That's what a lot of this is about, and what can we do to avoid escalation of behavior so that, you know, our numbers every, each and every year, to the best of our ability, are headed in the, in the right direction. And here were our 2021 CPI trainings for documentation purposes, and then we also report all this data in Oasis using our special education and Section 504 software. So that's how we pulled these numbers. That's been a change over the last couple of years, so it's made these reports a little bit easier to assemble than in the past with reaching out to different principals in each building.
Mr. Baumgartner?
Yes.
Is, there's nobody that's allowed to restrain a child unless they've received the training, is that right, or?
It's always best practice that we try to find somebody who has been trained. If a student is in imminent, you know, we need to intercede, teachers may do that, right? So that's part of our board policy. I think we still have that in the corporal punishment. It's really not about punishment, it's more about making sure that teachers know, because this is part of the training. If something is about to happen to a child, yeah, it's great if I'm trained, but if I'm, if I need to intervene, I need to intervene, right? Whether I'm trained or not, to save the life of that child or to protect them from danger.
Right.
So it's an important element that we discuss during training.
Okay. And then, do we know what our percentages of trained individuals are per building or per district?
We, I would have to, I can get you that information. For example, we train probably about 55 district-wide, but that doesn't cover all the staff that, you know, have maybe attended a previous year but not kept their certification up. All right. And finally, there are other questions. Just, you know, this slide lastly is showing how all of this connects. So our focus on social-emotional learning came up earlier this year, student engagement, trauma-sensitive schools, all of these initiatives connect to what is our ultimate goal, which is to support students appropriately, proactively, and, you know, avoid escalating behavior so that, you know, our numbers head in the right direction and we're providing the best level of support that we can for kids. Resources, where are you at the end there?
I have one more question for you. So we have total number of students involved in restraints, which was 11. Is it, can we have information as to like a building breakout for that, like where those incidences occurred?
Yes.
I mean, just for the board?
Yes.
So that we could kind of look to see where our training levels are? When you get the numbers for our building certifications and then numbers for restraints, so we can just look to see where the numbers are?
Yep. Yep. I can break that out by school.
Well, this report shows just a whole, another facet of not just reading math, writing arithmetic, that, you know, our staff deals with. And it's, it's here to facilitate the education of all children. And it may look like a dry report, but I'm looking at it and saying, there's a lot of work that's done here for these kids. It's amazing. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Baumgartner.
Thank you.
And you want to go to now the information items?
Yes. Back in June, John Hewnich from Cross Anderson was here to present the Deferred Maintenance Report. That was the joint effort of John, Troy Miller, who's here this evening, and George Sigsworth, our buildings guy. And basically what deferred maintenance is, for the lack of a better phrase, is that which needs to be fixed. So things were ranked in the priority of one, two, or three. One needs to be fixed in an imminent way, as in within the next two to four or so years. Priority twos can wait a little longer, and priority threes can wait even longer. But that's only half of the picture. But that's only half of the picture. That's stuff that needs to be fixed. The presentation this evening from Troy Miller from LHB is educational adequacy. What are we doing with our buildings in order to provide a maximized learning experience for our kids? And that's not just that which needs to be fixed. That could be reorganization of classrooms, physical spaces such as safety and security and entryways, or a variety of other things. And then there are other considerations on top of that. You'll hear information here this evening about childcare and information about a pool. So all of those items you're going to see here, these are simply other items that need to be considered in order to make the best decisions possible. And it's absolutely necessary to have this in order to make the best decision in the right way for our kids and for our community. So I'm going to turn it over to Troy, and he's going to walk you through the educational adequacy information.
Oh, thanks. I've been actually working with the district now for six years, roughly, coming here and spending time, going through a variety of different things. And, you know, when you start getting in and start rolling up your sleeves and looking at the buildings, as was mentioned earlier, that so many of the staff here do such a wonderful job of keeping your buildings looking wonderful, that oftentimes what's wrong with them are things that go a whole lot deeper than just the cosmetic. And it doesn't matter what building I'm in, all of the buildings here look great. But when you start, like I said, digging into it and looking at things that need to be repaired, you know, George and I spend a lot of time together each year trying to figure out what project is the one that requires the greatest amount of work or the most attention. And one of the things I heard today, I've been in town for, since ten o'clock this morning, actually, went to the Dairy Queen and heard somebody say, can you believe they put stone on the outside of that new high school where they're doing the repair work? And so some of the things I want to make sure we talk about are the fact that that is not stone, that is actually concrete. And we use concrete because, one, it's easy to form, and, two, it's a whole lot cheaper than having masons lay up brick. And labor has gotten so expensive and things have gotten so costly that we're starting to look for alternative ways to do things right and fix stuff. And that little masonry project, believe it or not, is an issue where there was actually water running down the walls. It then would run inside the building into the media center and cause the masonry inside the media center to crack. We have ceilings that need to be replaced because of water coming in those areas. And so what I wanted to make sure people understand is that just because you see something doesn't mean it's exactly what it appears to be. And so I just wanted to assure the public that, you know, we're not, we're not using stone, it's concrete, and that we're doing that because it's the most cost-effective way of making the repairs. And the repairs that were done there are things that need to be done all the way around the building. But one of the things that I also wanted to talk about is the fact that when things are happening and you're not sure why, or you're not sure why things are the way they are, it's because as you go through the buildings, you know, it doesn't matter if we're talking education, curriculum, mask mandates, or whatever it might be, oftentimes people tell us things that we have to do or perform that are just out of our control. And so people tell us that we have to improve the roof, for example, because we need to be more energy-conscious, and we need to do all these repairs to the roof and to put more insulation on the roof. And guess what happens when we do that? Someone had a great idea that we're going to put four more inches of insulation on the roof, and before we relied on thinner insulation to melt the snow to reduce the roof load, and now if we add more insulation, what happens to the snow?
Stinks.
It stays. And how much does snow weigh?
A lot.
A lot. A lot. So now if we've got a roof that needs to be replaced at the high school, what do we have to do? We have to increase the structural capacity of what's underneath. And so if you look at the fact that this right here is a school that I'm working on right now, it's, I was actually there before I came here, you start taking apart a building and you say, okay, we're going to, we're going to replace the roof, and guess what? Now we have to take a look at the structure to make sure it can support the additional snow and roof load. When the ceilings are all down, the state says, guess what you're going to do now? You're going to introduce fire suppression systems, which are sprinkler lines. So if there's a fire or something else that goes wrong, you're going to have a fire suppression system that meets state standards, and guess what those pipes weigh?
A lot.
A lot. Now, all of the electrical systems in this district are in woefully inadequate, would that be a good word, inadequate conditions where you can't get parts for some of the panels. The backup systems are old and need to be addressed. If you go to the high school, there literally was a fire in one of the rooms. And so now the state says, guess what? If you're going to touch your electrical system, what do you have to do?
Upgrade it all.
Upgrade it all. Mechanically, do you know how many air exchanges we're expected to do in a room now to meet current ventilation standards compared to the nineteen-seventies or sixties if you're at some of the other buildings? So when we take the ductwork down, guess what we have to do? Put new ductwork back in, and that's new piping. And even some of the other things like water piping and stuff, as that needs to be replaced, all of a sudden, we have things that look like this where the building is wide open, right? It's wide open, and that gives us opportunity to say, maybe it's time to move some walls around. Because by the time we take everything down to replace all these things, if we can improve one thing that makes teaching and learning better, I mean, teachers do wonderful things, all of my siblings are teachers, and I tell people, I can spend a lot of money, you know, making buildings better. Number one, it's your staff, and number two, it's how can we make a building better so what they do is more effective? And so that's really what we're here to talk about, is whether it's safe and secure, technology, technology has transformed the way you think about education after COVID, right? How flexible and portable it is. It doesn't replace the teacher, and oftentimes, we learn that, you know, you still need to go to school, I still need to go to the office to mentor staff and things of that nature, but technology is very much in the forefront now in terms of how we think about buildings. And then there's the prepaid programs, individual, small group support, so many things today that we just now understand are very different than when I went to school or many of you went to school, and that's really what we need to start thinking about. So with regard to safe and secure, believe it or not, I got to spend the morning with SWAT and Homeland Security going through a new school, it's not new, it's actually a renovated building, and talking about what are the strategies for an elementary versus a middle versus a high school? Strategies are very different. And in elementary school, where does most of the threat come from? Outside the building. If you talk about where does a threat from the high school come from, ninety percent of the threat that is violence in a high school comes from where?
Inside.
Inside the building. When you talk about what is the strategy then for safe and secure, very different. And so when I meet with Homeland Security today and on Thursday, the conversation is, why should we have different approaches to safe and secure when we look at what the facility should look like? What does the front door look like? What does that, what does that whole experience feel like if you're coming to the school and you're looking for something that's welcoming and you're met with a whole bunch of locked doors? And when you're in the high school, what's the biggest issue we see in high school that causes violence? Number one, bullying. And so when you look at, how is the bathroom designed? How wide are the hallways? How much glass there is? So when we think about safe and secure at a high school level, as well as almost any school, it seems like these days, but when you think about safe and secure at a high school, do you think about glass walls or do you think about concrete walls?
Concrete.
We put glass in.
I know.
We put glass everywhere. And why is that?
The visual conceit.
So they can see. The number one thing we've learned at a high school is kids won't act if they think somebody's watching. And the other thing we want is we want people to feel like they're being watched, they're being cared for, and we want the staff to know the names of every student. And so we want that glass and that transparency there because we want that connection. And so very different strategies today in what we've learned versus where we were probably even eighteen months ago. And so I was the architect who designed Red Lake High School. Guess what happened there? I got to go on a speaking tour, I got to sit in front of insurance agents and lawyers talking about safe and secure strategies. And like I said, this week I'll be spending lots of time with individuals from other places, talking about what is the right way. And when you start talking about things like special needs students and things like that, all of those things are concepts that we really want to talk about when we do planning, and where is the front door? Where is the office? How do we, how do we maintain that level of control? When we look at the layout of classroom space, gone are the days of nine hundred square-foot classrooms on hallways. Guess what we call that? And we've called that for about twenty years now. I've been designing schools for over thirty years. For twenty years, we've called classrooms on hallways, cells, and bells. And it's because of the fact that when students are there, what is the effectiveness of teaching and learning for the entire group of kids? Does every student in a nine hundred square-foot classroom learn the same way?
No.
No. But when they're in that one room by themselves, what do we expect?
That they're all learning the same.
That they're all learning the same way, staying on task at the same pace. And today, what we're doing is we're creating these academic support areas out here where kids are fluidly moving back and forth, and a lot of your support staff are out in this area delivering the services, and they're helping with remedial teaching. Maybe it's a student who was sick and not in school for two weeks that needs that catch-up time, but rather than sending that student down the hall, we try to deliver those services right here and create environments where everyone is supported no matter what case they learn. And that's even true at the elementary level. You know, when you think about the fact that there's a lot of services that are being delivered even at the elementary level, what's the last thing we want a student doing? Wandering the hallways aimlessly, looking for something else to do other than where they're supposed to be. And so we talk a lot about that when we do the layouts of a school and we start talking about what's the most appropriate way to think and learn. The other one is media centers. Right now, I'm designing two schools that are at the middle school and high school level. Neither one has a media center in the traditional sense. The high school doesn't have any books, no books at all. Any books that are needed by students for a subject matter are with that discipline in those classrooms, otherwise there's no books. The media center then focuses on how do kids spend time on their phone, right? How do they spend time on their phone finding information and believable information? How do you, how do you double-check the standard? What is it that you're looking for? And so media centers today are something that's very different than when I went to high school. It's all about that same idea of support. And right now, what are the things that we do a lot of in schools? We do a lot of group project work. If you're at the high school level, how many times can you get together with your group and actually do the project? We have kids that are in different sports, some might work, there's all kinds of things and activities going on in their lives today. And so oftentimes, the only time they can get together is when they're at lunch. And so we put most of the media centers today right adjacent to the cafeteria, and do we let food go in the, in the media center? Absolutely. Sorry. Another carpet to take care of. But it's that free-flowing and that kind of ebb and flow of providing all these opportunities for students to make sure that every moment they're here, they're finding their way as individuals, as well as participating and understanding what it takes to work as a group, and still maintaining the connectedness that says we need to be learning every day. And then you look at vocational programs, and one of the programs that we actually are out there talking a lot about, that we say, this is a program that really hit the mark, that is doing great things. Was it cheap? Nope. And if you look at whether it's a fab lab, or science, or whatever it might be, a lot of those spaces aren't cheap. And when you think about the effectiveness of kids now using those spaces, it's what it takes. But I don't know if you recognize this room right here? This is actually your fax lab. How many of you have been there to see it? If you haven't, you should go. And the reason is because when we started working on that space, it was residential kitchens. And the conversation was, do we create more residential kitchens that are newer? And the answer to the question was absolutely not, because what do kids know in a residential kitchen that they can learn here in forty-five minutes? And the answer was very little. Even at middle school level, you know, my kids were home making macaroni and cheese and baking cakes and all that stuff when they were, you know, in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So what is it that we want to teach them in family and consumer ed? And it is basically a little kitchen central from the Food Network where they're going there and they're getting the experience of food chemistry, they're in, they kind of get a lesson in what does it mean to be a chef, and what does it mean to think about food and the culinary arts? And the other thing that's exciting about that space was a long conversation is, when you go here, there's no chairs. There's no stools, there's no chairs, and why is that?
Because they're doing things.
Because they're doing things. And so a lot of the spaces that we're creating now are thinking about the fact that when kids are doing things, they're engaged, and they're actually spending more time focusing on the task than they are sitting in a chair, doodling on their notebook, or trying to fiddle with their phone. They're up and they're engaged and they're active. So even those spaces which are welding labs and automotive and, you know, your FFA agricultural lab are all spaces where lots of those kids never sit down, and it's because of the fact that they're engaged, they just need some updating. Furniture is huge. Furniture is actually more important today than the walls themselves. And so making sure, like when we look at the foods lab, making sure that the furniture matches the function. And so if you think about these two rooms, how the exact same number of components just arranged different ways. And when we talk about flexibility, that's really what we need. And so whether it's case work, furniture, or anything else, that flexibility is really what we're looking for in teaching environments. In terms of what it means for your district, if we're taking all those ceilings down, we're replacing all those things, what is it that we want and take advantage of in terms of rearranging some of the walls and looking at opportunities to create new teaching spaces across the board, if that becomes a priority? You know, what is that budget limit, and how do we prioritize and say that number one is, let's move the media center? Number two is safe and secure? I don't know what those priorities are, but tonight, we're here just to talk about what is it that other places are doing and how that, how that might impact your buildings? Some of the buildings, there's not a lot we can do. You know, this building right here, it's pretty new. To go in and start thinking about, we're going to take ceilings down, do this, that, and the other thing, there really isn't that much need here that would justify that level of renovation or movement of walls. But if you look at the high school, for example, you know, every system in that building needs to be, needs to be undertaken and replaced, right? And it's like your hot water heater at home, or your furnace, anything else, people forget how old that building is. It was originally constructed in?
Seventy-six.
Nineteen seventy-six. And it was originally built at a cost of four million dollars.
Three point seven.
Three point seven. And guess how much it costs just to fix the walls around the media center? That little project that you see over there, guess how much that project cost?
Two hundred and seven.
Two hundred and seven thousand dollars. So when you start thinking about, if you're going to make an investment and you're going to replace all these systems, that's a pretty big ticket item. It's a little bit more to do some of the things that we're talking about here, and little is relative, depending on the program and things like that. But when you start looking at the elementary school, for example, there's lots of things that need to be done just in terms of meeting ADA. Is ADA something that we get to pick?
No.
Nope. We're told what it's going to be. And you start looking at all the other codes that we're going to have to go in and address, is it time to take advantage of that to say, what about the space need and the thirty-some kids that are coming in? And year after year, I think you've seen increases, and there's a space crunch, what does that begin to look like? How do we add on to the building if that's what we want to do? Or how do we change the way the rooms are configured so that it works better as a facility of that nature? And how do we address all of these considerations that, that when I sat down and talked with Cheryl, it was, these are the things that we would really like to address. These are real, real challenges we have in the building as curriculum changes, student needs change, you know, there's a variety of things that continue to take place in that building that need space. And so one of the things we've talked about is, well, do you build a new early learning center with a community center? Maybe it's got a pool attached to it? Or do you stick it on the elementary school? If you've got to replace the electrical service, you've made upgrades to the mechanical system already, this is what it would take to provide, just replacing the program that exists over there plus a little bit extra. And you start looking at, we still need food service, we still need utilities, we're going to have to address parking, drives, stormwater management plan that's now required by your Department of Natural Resources. There's so many things that go into it. Is it better to actually? Is it better to actually do a plan like this where we expand the existing building, provide opportunities for all the kids from birth to fourth grade?
Third.
Third grade? How do we address all of those needs here? Maybe create a bigger stormwater management pond? And is that more cost-effective? And as we go through those iterations, looking at, well, if this becomes the early learning center, it can be expanded this direction. We can expand the two wings on either side to take care of the Montessori and all the other space crunches that exist in the building and replace the central systems. Is that a far better use of money than to build a separate structure? Where then you'll be replicating things like more toilets, more kitchens. And all of those things, plus you have the challenge of how do you handle that with another custodial person, utilities and things of that nature? So what's better? You know, a separate structure or continuing to grow the one that you have? And we talk about the fact that, you know, when you start laying it out, could this become the secure entry where no matter what program you're looking for, there's one spot that is now managed instead of multiple locations? Is it better to have, you know, some of these learning commons that we're talking about? Because there are needs for students who are falling behind. We know that if you fall behind when you're at a younger age, it's harder to catch up the older you get. So is it appropriate to have these spaces here versus in making investments further up? And then how do you talk about separating the bus traffic from the vehicular traffic when you've got before and after-school loading zones and things of that nature?
Well, there's a sore thumb.
Yeah. I've been here for those moments. Like I said, at this building, there's needs. You know, if you came in the front door, you've seen that there's masonry issues there. It was just not detailed and executed correctly. So what do you see? A lot of cracking of brick. You see a lot of moisture with white efflorescence. But other than that, this building's in pretty good shape. So maybe there's not much we can do there, do here because all of the bathrooms, for the most part, need ADA. Everything is what needs to be. But really, it's just fixing these areas on the outside of the building. And programmatically, there aren't a lot of needs here that can be addressed. At the middle school, we do have some needs. We have bathroom issues with ADA. We have a few other things. But for the most part, there's not a lot of things that really need to be done at this building. Maybe it's because of its vintage and how it was done. But the opportunities there to do major renovations are much smaller than what we see at the elementary and what we see at the high school. Believe it or not, the high school is, it's actually a really good building. I know that when we walk around it, we talk about the fact that things are wearing out. Things always wear out. And right now, I've got, I think, four buildings that are being totally gutted. You saw some of the pictures. We do it all the time. And people say, well, where do the kids go? How do you handle kids? Kids are the easy part. It's teachers. It's teachers and administrators who are concerned about the noise, the dust, everything else. The kids roll with it, and they actually enjoy it. But what needs to be done at the high school? You know, it's building maintenance, safe and secure, code impacts. There's a lot of things going on there that really need to be talked about and discussed. And when you look at the layout, how many of you have been to the high school and walked it? There's a few hands. If you get the chance. Opening up the invitation, looking here at Josh, saying, is that okay? Go see the building. Go see the building. Especially the vocational areas, woefully out of date. Don't meet any of the ventilation standards, most of them don't work. We've got things in the building that we don't even know what they do because they don't work, they're not hooked up. And so when you look at many of those things, walk the building and just get a sense of what is it that they actually do here? And what could they do with a facility that was modernized and brought out of the seventies to something that, you know, is more reflective of what kids are interested today? And so we started doing that. We started saying, well, look at the kitchen and cafeteria. The kitchen is very small. And when you look at what the cooks do in that kitchen, it is amazing. They do a lot there because nutritional standards have changed. And now you have not just being able to take stuff out of the freezer, put it in the oven, and serve it, but you've got expectations for fruits and vegetables, managing a calorie count and all of those things that they're trying to accomplish in what is a very small kitchen. And the cafeteria suffers because of that. Science and agriculture, you can see a lot of the equipment and a lot of the staining and everything that just needs to be addressed and taken care of. The science rooms are actually very small. So originally, science was supposed to be larger. Ended up, you had to add some hallways for safety because you elected not to sprinkle the building. So you had to add more circulation in hallways. And because of that, they cut the space out of the classrooms to make more doors to the outside. So some of the science rooms are actually, I think, there's one that's seven fifty. And that's the one that has the most amount of hazardous materials and dangers in it. And it's one of your smallest rooms in the building. So if you think about all the things that are happening in that space with kids bumping into each other with beakers and things like that, it's really something that it'd be wonderful if we could upgrade those spaces. Music doesn't meet ADA with the pits and those types of things. Here's some more of the vocational shop areas with ventilation challenges, equipment locations and things like that for safety zones. The welding shop, please, please, please go visit that and say, you know, it really is in dire need of some improvements. And then athletics and locker room. You know, right now, you've got the weights and fitness. Some of those pieces of equipment are in the hallways, which isn't safe. If you think about, you know, when athletic events and stuff like that are going on with kids possibly getting their fingers pinched and things of that nature, it's a really popular program. I am amazed at how many kids are lifting weights and doing a variety of things, not just working out in the gym. But it really is kind of kudos to your staff that there are really lifelong activities going on in the athletic area that are pretty significant. And then the media center, you know, is there a better place? I go to your media center, beautiful room, great windows. Guess how many people are there most of the time? None. No one goes there. And the reason is, why?
Location, location, location.
Location, 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 and time, 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 time. So if their day is packed full of things and the location is in a bad spot, does it ever get used? The answer is no. And it'd be curious just to even get a book count one day. When you talk about, you know, data and what data information you have, it'd be interesting to get book counts from each of the buildings to see what number of books are actually being checked out and how those lines and collections are being considered.
I think we know, don't we?
Yes, well.
You have, yeah.
So here's one idea that I quickly threw together. You know, if we took and created student support or special education in this area, move the media center forward off our cafeteria. We do lots of buildings today, even in the north, with no lockers in the middle school and high school. We just did Hutchinson High School. We put a locker in there for every student. We said, okay, anyone who wants a locker, sign it out. Guess how many lockers they're taking out? They're taking out two-thirds of the lockers this summer. Turning it into space that is basically academic support because the kids don't use it. They carry their books in their backpacks. They come to school without coats.
You see them in high school, right? They don't use their lockers.
Yep. Flip-flops from his twenty below. And but that's what most districts are doing today. If you want a locker, we'll provide lockers for a third of the staff. Sign them out. And there are more lockers than they know what to do with. And so those are things that we can keep in mind, too, as we start to lay out the whole area and say, how many lockers do we really need? Is that space real estate better used for something else? Maybe the lockers are relocated to another area of the building because the real estate's more valuable for another purpose. You know, just looking at, you know, each one of those as kind of a critical spot, kind of went through and just did some identifiers. And then looked at and said, well, what if we take a look at this side of the building? You know, Sean mentioned pool. Is it best to do a separate facility for a pool? Or is it best to do a pool that's attached to the high school? And again, it kind of comes down to, what's the vision of the pool? Is it a splash pad and something that, you know, is geared more towards community ed and something that's geared towards small kids in that area? Or is it something that's looked at in terms of a competitive swim amenity? Where, you know, like other districts, maybe you have a swim team and you have folks who are swimming in other pools. But whatever that pool looks like, you know, what does it want to be? Not only what does the pool want to be, but when you think about it, what are the locker rooms going to be used for? Who can use those locker rooms throughout the day versus having them sit there empty for most of the day? And how do you break down men's, women's, family? And how does that get access throughout the day? Most pools we do now are located at middle schools because they try to work it into the curriculum, which doesn't always work. But the pool that we're doing right now, it's a fifty-meter pool. And people said, oh, my heavens, that is a huge body of water. It's at the high school, and guess what they're doing in that pool? They are learning paddle boarding, kayaking, swimming, diving. Everyone wants a paddleboard, George. You are a musician, you have, everybody wants a paddleboard. But there's so many things that you can do in a body of water, and it doesn't have to be deep. It just has to be big enough to do those types of amenities and those types of services. So it comes down to, location is what you want the pool to be. But keep in mind also the fact that if you put it off on a separate structure, it drives the costs up. And sometimes it's in ways that you don't think about. It's a parking lot. If it's a parking lot, then it's a stormwater management plan. And then it's another boiler plant. And then it's another person to clean and do all those types of things. And so even though on the surface it might be one versus the other, if you end up with a community center that is, let's say, five million dollars more than scattering those amenities and attaching them to current buildings, that's five million dollars that possibly isn't spent on other needs. And so, you know, those are things just to keep in mind that as we talk through it, whatever's right for your community, you're going to tell me. And that's what we're going to do. But when it comes to a lot of the amenities and what you're wanting to do or wanting to accomplish, where is the best and most appropriate location is oftentimes what the adjacency looks like. So again, here would be an opportunity to build a larger amenity if you wanted a community center, early learning and pool all in one. That's about the size. And so when you think about how big that footprint is versus the size of the elementary school, when you bring all those amenities together, you can think about what do the services look like if they're separate versus if they're in common with something else. And so if you look at the middle school, you know, there's space for a pool on this side. Showed a spot, location at the high school. And if it's a separate facility, there's space on the site for that to work as well. So with that, kind of a lot to cover. We're not really here to make decisions tonight or talk about what's the cost of this versus that. What we wanted to do is just let you, the board, and the community who's interested, know that these are the amenities and these are the things that are going on in the district, and these are the possibilities. And somewhere down the road, you folks are going to be asked to make those priorities and say, well, if it's, this is the cap that we want to spend, how does that fit with the priorities that we want to accomplish? And so that'll be part of the process over the next few meetings.
Well, first of all, thank you, Troy. That was very thorough and very well done, so thank you very much. It's a lot of information to consume. This is not the last time you're going to see that information. So if folks are interested in learning more, August thirtieth in the auditorium, six P M., we have a community engagement meeting, and folks can show up and hear this information in addition to deferred maintenance information. There'll be a snippet at the end of that meeting on finance. And then on September twenty-second, you'll see the full picture of finance from our financial consultant, Baird. But on the thirtieth, folks can certainly chime in with their comments or their questions. And we hope that you will show up to do just that because this is not a decision that we take lightly and certainly not one we do in isolation. So we want to hear from the community. I'm not sure if you had any questions for Troy. This would be the time if you do.
I don't know how you can have too many questions with all that information. But I did, I just, I think I wanted to, what really stuck out to me the most is when we were, you were kind of going through about the structure and hallways and rooms off of hallways. And I think of twenty-something years ago when I went to college. And I think of that experiences, and I was even older when I went to college. I was in my twenties. And I thought how, I think, like kids that go from high school here to colleges and go, wow, this learning environment is so different than what is traditional for me. And like, just the idea of being able, there's spaces there that you can get together and do those group projects. Their classrooms are laid out differently. There are places where the kids are getting, in their own majors, get together. And just the learning difference that happens and a mind shift that happens in young adults and kids. To see those spaces transform, I think that's what was so novel about this building twenty years ago was that we were looking at the neighborhoods instead of the classrooms. And we've really reimagined what those services look like outside those neighborhoods. For me personally, being that school's a place for the kids to come and get educated, the education portion of it and how the kids learn is so important for me looking at this project and my priority that I would like to see. And I thought that was just a huge lesson that we could take away with some of the things that you had pointed out. And I think that, for me, that's very, much at the top of how do we utilize those spaces and make those spaces more comfortable and conducive for that learning shift to happen?
It is, I think, the hardest thing that I've done or do in my career is how do you explain to people that what we did? I graduated in nineteen eighty-four. What I did in nineteen eighty-four in school has no relevance today in terms of what a school is or what a school should look like. I just, you know, I'm blessed that I've had this job, that I get to see all those differences. And a school can be a place where you're prepared for college, school to work. You've already got a good start with your family and consumer ed program. But school and life is just so different than when I grew up. And when I look out there, you know, I see some folks who are maybe a little younger than I am. But school is so different today than when I was there. You know, I, there were six computers in my entire high school when I went. Six. And, you know, I didn't even have to take typing. That's why I'm so good at three-fingering. You know, it's just what kids learn today and what's expected is, and I'm sure you see it, Steve, just walking at, you're in this building? Just what you see in this building compared to what happened in a school of this age group, you know, twenty years ago? The kids are so.
The world has changed.
The world has changed.
The world has changed.
For better or for worse?
Yeah.
And how do you manage that? And how do you excite the kids? And how do you engage them, particularly at the high school level? You know, there's nothing more, there's nothing worse than to go through a high school or a brand-new high school and see kids bored. And I can't tell you how many times I walk through brand-new buildings and kids are bored. Staff's excited. Got a brand-new building. I got a new Promethean board, and the kids are bored. And that's really what we're, you know, any dollar that's spent, we have to try to reverse that trend. We have to get kids excited while being here.
I think of the days when we went to school where all of the dust or in rows and you didn't really, I mean, if you had a larger class, you didn't know a lot of the other kids or you didn't have that opportunity to talk to other students or learn from other kids around you. There's so much learning that takes place that we've, I mean, that you could definitely see back when we did virtual school. There's the learning that takes place from the teacher to the student is immeasurable. But the learning that takes place from student to student, from peer to peer, watching each other, especially if kids are shy or they don't know how to ask for a question or they didn't, maybe they didn't hear the instructions and they're looking at their peers. That kind of learning is so important. And to have classrooms that are set up for that kind of conducive learning where they're just not in rows and desks is crucial. I think we've done a really good job trying to use our facilities in that manner. But to have some remodel and some updates that would be even more conducive as we're going through to look at these bigger projects of the necessary things is, I think, is immeasurable. You really can't put a tag on that.
I did a new high school, and the referendum was for new furniture in the whole building. And some of the folks there wanted to buy the furniture before the building was done. We were actually, we actually hadn't even started designing yet. And the administration wanted to go and buy new furniture. And guess what they were going to buy? Newer versions of what they already had. And I said, timeout, we're not doing that. And people tell me I'm pushy that way. You know, I, I'm a little opinionated. But, you know, it's like you sit here and you have this conversation about what is it we want school to be? And then it's that? So I said, before we do that, there's one science room. So I said, before we do that, there's one science room sitting empty, let's have literature taught in science. Great teacher, within two weeks, guess what her, guess what she said? I do not want to leave this room. Kids are up, they're engaged, they're moving. It's a totally different experience than having all of these desks in a room that kids are falling asleep on, you can't reach the back of the room. And, and so that was the thing that we needed to stop the whole process and say, we've got to look at this holistically and make the expenditure so that, just what you're saying, it's, we're rethinking, you know, what is something as simple as a desk just to get kids focused on, on what's going on in the room?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Troy.
Looking forward to the process.
And we're okay if you leave, we know you got to travel.
Thank you.
All right, we touched base on that community meeting.
Yep, August 30th.
And we have other dates up there, but they still can be floating.
Sure, the, the only other date that's an absolute positive for sure is September 22nd. We want to make it various enough where folks will be able to be in attendance if they want to be. So, August 30th.
All right, and next we'll go to the, review that updated transportation policy. We passed that last meeting.
Yes, you wanted to see that again.
And I just wanted to see it.
So here it is again. In the change that you see, there is the second-to-last line in the policy which moved the number of miles from 75 to 125. And remember, the conversation surrounding that was, we now have Altoona in our district, and 125 would then capture Altoona. And we talked about Hayward a bit, that would also encapsulate Hayward. And remember, this policy is about when we are able to do charter busing, and we felt that it'd be best that the athletic director and/or the director of transportation would have that conversation together. So that was the other change. They already do, but now this just formalizes that. So those are the changes that you wanted to see. This is still informational, it doesn't become official until the next meeting, if that's what you want to do.
All right. I don't think we want to change that, we did it.
So, okay.
Then we have the first reading of the policy handbook.
All righty. This is simply an obsolete policy, change it to access to board policies, because it used to be you're handing out a policy handbook, that's just old language. So you'll see a lot of information that's been deleted. And then the stuff that you see in blue, all policies shall be posted and available to staff, students, and the public on the district website. Printed copies of specific policies are also available upon request from the district office, as opposed to the old version of, you can get it and we can hand it out to you, and we always do, because that's just not what we do anymore. And this hasn't been changed since 2000, and it was written in 1995, so it's time. And this again is not official, this is a first reading.
Yeah.
And then you'd see it again next month. If there's feedback, I'll certainly take it, if you have any. Okay, you'll see it again next month.
Updated. And we'll move to action items. First one up is donations to the district.
Okay, we are very fortunate to be in the position to be accepting donations this evening. There are quite a few. We have a donation of $1,000 to the Middle School Angel Fund from Clark and Mitzi Anderson. Again, the Angel Fund is specific for kids that are of need, and there are a lot of kids in our district that are just that, that are in need. And that could be school supplies, jackets, coats, eyeglasses, a variety of things. It's, it runs the gamut. So that's the first donation. We have a donation from Amory Express. This is the gas pump at the express station downtown that's specifically earmarked for school. There's a donation they do quarterly of $1,226. That's also to the Angel Fund, we simply split that up, four buildings, four ways. Wisconsin Credit Union brought in some school supplies, and they also donated $50 towards school supplies. That was brought in last week, so we have that here in the district office. We're going to come up with a plan for distributing school supplies for folks who need it, because we also have the Dollar Tree who has donated school supplies, and as you see by the picture there, a lot of school supplies. The elementary and Sue Stewart, I believe it was, came in and inventoried that. She called and asked if there was anything that we had for her, and Cheryl was quick to say, yes, come on and inventory this if you could, and she did. Also, Johnson Ford, they donated school supplies, and you'll see those supplies there. And that's it for donations. So you would need to make a formal motion to accept donations at this time.
Move to accept the donations as presented.
Thank you, Cheryl. And a second?
Second.
Dale? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Bones, no.
Thank you, with a heartfelt thank you.
Yes, a big thank you.
But Josh is hoping there were some boots and coats in there for the kids, right? When they come to school like that?
So you can fill out the lockers and
I tell you, what amazes me more than anything is those flip-flops. I don't want to see your toes in January and February.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
Because they're blue.
Yeah. Well, yeah. Next is our return to school plan.
Okay, the safe return to school plan for 2122. Moving on with it, and this, and then the first slide, after the title slide, you will see that this is a requirement of the school district, all school districts in the state of Wisconsin, from the Department of Public Construction, and also from, from the federal government, if you are to receive ESSER dollars, which is the federal dollars that are earmarked specifically for schools. Districts must determine a plan for how the district will maintain a healthy and safe environment for students, educators, and other staff, and also how the district will ensure continuity of services in the event of a surge of COVID cases. So we're charged with the study, and the plan that you see here is a response to that charge. The plan must be reviewed at least every six months. We will, we will plan to review the plan each and every month as we move along until we simply don't need to do so anymore. So you'll see this again in September and see where we stand after three weeks of school, and we'll see how we're doing. We developed, districts who developed a plan prior to March of 2021 do not need to develop a new plan. Ours was adopted on August 17th of 2020, but you do need to revisit the plan itself. And in this case, we've re-authored some of the plan to reflect a changed time, because that was a year ago, tomorrow, a year ago tomorrow. The goals for returning to school, did I miss this slide? I missed this slide. Sorry. Return to school, the district administrator or the board of education are authorized to make chan, changes to the plan. The plan may be changed based on local, community COVID health data and information. The plan may be modified to comply with an order from a local, state, or a federal authority. And lastly, the plan does allow us to receive federal ESSER funding.
And we're assuming that we would be making all of these decisions together as we move forward, not just one or the other, but as a group.
Yeah, absolutely. Any changes that will be made to the plan will be made here by the five of you. District administration, oops, sorry, maximize, the goals are to maximize student learning, keep students and staff physically safe, care for the social and emotional and mental health needs of students and staff, keep students in person, in an in-person learning model, meet the needs of every student by considering the unique experiences of students and by considering students, families as active partners in learning. And lastly, design flexibility into school schedules, environments, protocols, and norms for in-person learning. In an overarching way, the two big recommendations right off the bat to you from me are that we have an in-person learning model for the school year 2021, 2022, and have a five-day school week. So it looks very much like August of 2019 at that point, rather than 2020. So that's the recommendation for the learning landscape. Any questions thus far before I continue? I just keep moving along, I don't want to miss any questions that you may have.
Oh, we'll interrupt you.
Okay, interrupt away.
We're so good at that.
That's okay. Positive COVID cases in the district, we anticipate that there will be some of that. Students and staff who test positive for COVID will be, would be school excluded for 10 days. Family members living in the same household as a positive COVID case would also be school excluded for 10 days. Students and staff who are symptomatic for COVID would be school excluded until they are asymptomatic for 24 hours without medication. Continued positive cases in the district, the district will contact, trace positive cases and will notify families if their children are close contacts. The district will not close con, will not quarantine close contacts. Students and staff who are identified as close contacts of a positive case may remain in school unless they develop symptoms or test positive for COVID. Staff and students should not come to school if they are ill. Other, go ahead.
The contact tracing of positive cases, it's not just school, but county also does that, correct?
Yes, Polk County, we had two positive cases in our clubhouse childcare setting that occurred on Friday, but we were notified of on Saturday, and contact tracing was done by us prior to Monday, but Polk County actually called us today to ask to do the same thing, but we had already done it. So, yes, they are working in conjunction with us as our health agency. Any other questions about positive, the, the two slides on positive COVID cases that I just presented?
The last one is kind of pertinent and important. You know, that's how we're going to stay open, is if you don't feel good, if your child doesn't feel good, you know, don't send them to school. I mean, that's
I think that's the biggest, how, how we stayed in school last year. If you're sick, stay home. Yeah.
Yep.
To add further clarity in regards to close contacts and quarantining, the reason we're contact tracing is if we don't contact trace, we can't tell parents their kid was a contact at all. The difference is, we're letting parents choose whether they quarantine, or parents choose whether they're going to getting a COVID test. But if we don't contact trace, they wouldn't even know. And I don't know that we would feel that we're in the best place if we're not even doing our due diligence to let them know that it had happened. It's their choice, but we're letting them know that it happened.
And also, I mean, it's prudent to do that, to keep the doors
Sure.
open in case we have a mass spread that people are unaware of.
Sure, our goals are to stay here, in-person learning from day one to the last day. That's our goal. Polk County cases and district, district cases of COVID-19, this is shown by two-week window, and the significance of the date on the file left is, this is when we departed from school and went into summer school. The blue is the county cases, the red are district cases. As you can see, I don't need to read it for you, but you can see that the number is 17-1-324. Since August 4th, we've had a spike up into, in the county, up to 109. In the district, 2000, and then three. So I guess you could say that's an upward trend, but not as pronounced so as the district cases. So those are the data that we have. We've tracked data since this all began way back in March of 2020, and we've simply kept track of the same number from the Polk County dashboard as we always have. Any questions about the data?
What was the, what was some of the higher numbers?
848 was the high mark in October, early November in the county. And high in the district was 26, and 17 of those happened over the course of a day and a half of school, seven in the afternoon at, at the middle school and one afternoon. And thankfully, it was a Friday, so we didn't have school the next day, which was helpful.
Do you think, as we continue to track this data going forward for the school year, as the county puts out the numbers, would it be prudent to include, just instead of overall county numbers, but to also include then school-age children numbers?
If we have access to that data, we certainly can.
Sure.
I'm not sure how they desegregate it there. If they do, that doesn't hurt, that's easy enough to do.
Sure, I think, I mean, I, I think it would just be another tool for us.
Sure, of the 109, there's a difference between 109 kids of school age and 109 just people living in Polk County.
Right, I mean, I get it that we, you know, we realize that we don't live, you know, in isolation here, but
Sure.
if we have elderly or, you know, people that are in that age group that don't necessarily have children at home versus the children that are positive, where we see that, I think maybe that would, I'm not sure that it would make a difference in our determination, but as we go forward to keep looking at the data as we're making decisions throughout the year, maybe it's just one more number that we have at our disposal.
I simply have to look and see how they desegregate it, and if not, I'd have to ask Polk County, can I get that?
Sure.
I guess I don't know.
Do they do it geographically at all?
I'm not sure that they do, but again, I'd have to ask that question. I've simply been looking at
They did it last year, I know they had.
I've just been looking at total number, total number is.
Because that would be helpful, too.
Yeah, I would. Yeah, and I, and I get, you know, I know we've seen that we've had spikes in, you know, like Osceola had a spike, and then we had, Clear Lake had a spike, and I get that, and I, and I understand that, but when we're thinking about that, even just, within our county, we're very mobile. So to see where those spikes are, you know, we're playing sports and things like that, I guess maybe we would look and see if we were in an area that was a high spike area or something like that, but we're pretty mobile in the county, so, and we know that if it's in one, you know, neighboring community, it's going to be here quickly. And then, and, you know, focusing on hospitalization rates versus positive cases, we know that we're going to continue to have positive cases. This will be a, it's a, it's a different, it's a different look, but I think those are all things that we'll look at as we move forward.
Sure.
Yep.
Bus transportation, students will not be socially distanced on buses. We had bus ridership down last year, I imagine for a variety of reasons, including parent choice. I don't know what it'll be this year. If you're going to socially distance a bus and do it by six-foot rule, 11 people will ride on each bus. That's just not going to work. We would end up with 25, 30 bus routes, or bus routes that last four or five hours. That's just not realistic. Buses are disinfected between routes, that's been happening since way back September of last year. The CDC, masks are required on school buses in accordance with current federal order. I don't know what will happen with that order, whether it's going to be in place once school starts, or it won't be, but the current order is that masks are worn by students and staff on a school bus. That's been imparted to me by the Department of Public Instruction, Department of Health Services, Polk County Health, our insurance provider, our attorney, everyone has said the same thing, this is an order and you must follow it. But, the next point, straight from the Department of Public Instruction, students will not be disciplined for a failure to wear a mask on a school bus. I don't know how to remedy those two items, to rectify that together, because it, it looks to me like an unenforceable federal order. I don't know what to say other than that's what it looks to be. I can simply say, we're going to follow a federal order from the federal, from the federal government in regards to masks, and I don't know what more to say beyond that.
Make your own conclusions, I guess.
So, for what it's worth. Breakfast and lunch, this isn't really mitigation, but good point of mention, we still have, as we did last year, free breakfast and lunch. Meals will continue for all of 2021 and 2022. That's not because of the district of choosing to do that, that's from the federal government choosing to do that for all schools in the entire country. Students will have access to hand sanitizer and hand washing prior to eating. Students will be socially distanced in cafeterias when possible. This has been possible, we have orchestrated it in the past, we can certainly orchestrate it again this year. Elementary and intermediate students typically eat as a class, and that's something we've been doing for quite some time already. That's nothing new. So those would be the rules of the road in breakfast and lunch. Athletics, Amory will follow all WIAA COVID guidelines to ensure that student athletes are allowed to compete. The guidelines are located there at that website. The guidelines in essence say that you are, are monitoring your health symptoms, and if you are COVID symptomatic, you wouldn't participate, you would choose not to participate. There aren't masks for spectators, masks for athletes, abbreviated sports seasons. We are a goal, we hope for, a traditional fall sports season on into winter and then into spring. And as Josh said earlier, we're fully in session with athletics as of today, everything that's a fall sport is happening. Varsity home events will be livestreamed via the We Are Amory Facebook page whenever possible. I'm not here to say every single solitary event is going to be livestreamed, but a lot of them are. Tracy's in the room, she's thankful for that. It's become a full-time gig and then some, and it's sort of become to be expected, a lot of folks like it, it's awesome. I've watched many a game right from my living room, right on the television. It's fantastic, but it is an undertaking. Spectators will be allowed at all athletic competitions. Right now, it's largely outdoor, with the exception of volleyball, but spectators allowed, masks are optional for spectators, just as they are for student athletes. Technology, we've come a long way in regards to our ability to provide instruction via virtual, though our goal is to remain in-person. We don't want to provide virtual, though if we have to, we are better able to do that now than we would have been at the beginning of last year, and certainly way better than we were back last March when we had 48 hours to prepare. All students have access to school-issued devices, elementary and intermediate school brand-new devices that you approved here recently. All staff have access to school-issued devices. We are pretty savvy now in things like Google Meet and Zoom. And, and lastly, all And all, and lastly, all requests for a virtual learning experience are run through building principals and we'll take those on a case-by-case situation. It did not work for everybody last year, and one of the reasons it didn't is not everyone had the technological capability of doing it. They didn't have internet or they didn't have connectivity that would allow them to do virtual, or they simply were not students that were able to learn virtually because it's not for everyone. I've done virtual classes and it doesn't really work very well for me. So we'll do those on a case-by-case basis if folks have those requests. Proper hygiene, these are some things that we've, we've sort of always done at the elementary and intermediate, certainly. Proper hygiene will be taught and encouraged. Classrooms sanitized, disinfected throughout the school day by teachers and custodians, depending on the setting. We have disinfecting and sanitizing happening after hours. High-touch areas are prioritized. Hand sanitizer in classrooms. And students and staff, this again, you've heard it before. If you're ill, stay home. That's a game changer for us as a district to be able to stay in person. Continued bathrooms sanitized and disinfected, common areas, same. All the products we use are entirely safe for school population and we have increased ventilation in each building and we will continue that. And the elementary has brand-new HVAC so that the air will never be as clean at the elementary as it is at the beginning of this school year. And that's because of the upgrade that you allowed us to have happen here over the course of summer, which prevented Cheryl from having air conditioning. And that's okay.
Are we done with that? Is it done?
It's almost done. It's not fully done. Face coverings, face coverings are optional for all students and staff in the school district of Amory. The board of education may revisit the topic of face coverings for students and staff if needed during the school year. And the school district will follow all local, state, and federal requirements and mandates for the wearing of face coverings. Almost to the end here. Social distancing and people interactions, classrooms will be socially distanced as much as possible. We will have field trips. Outside groups are allowed in. Assemblies and concerts are in-person and parents and volunteers are allowed into school. Student supports, the district is committed to working collaboratively with families of all students. Parents of children with disabilities are encouraged to communicate with their principal, child's case manager, or Brad here in the room. If there are specifics in the IEP that needs to be attended to, adjustments, modifications. We will continue to do meetings, conferences via Google Meet and Zoom and actually conferences. We did phone too. Whatever we have to do to communicate with folks, that's the method of technology we'll use to communicate for conferences. We want everyone to be involved. People's services team of school counselors, student success coordinators, school psychologists, administrators, all remain in place to help assist students get to the finish line, which in the school district of Amory is to get through graduation. Vaccinations, optional vaccination clinics have already been held for students with parental consent and staff. That happened way back in the spring. The district will not require students and staff to be vaccinated. The district will follow all local, state, and federal orders and mandates for vaccination of students and staff. I have heard or seen no such thing in regards to schools. Could there be? I don't know, but I have seen nothing of that cert thus far. Communication, we have a really nice website. It's been updated. Tracy does a nice job of maintaining it. So if you, if you wanted to know something, you're very likely to find it on the website and find it pretty quick. It's pretty user-friendly. We'll continue to communicate via text messaging, emailing, and mailings. We've typically done the first two. We send out a simultaneous where it goes to your, in essence, your phone and to your email. And folks seem to have appreciated that, especially the text messaging because their phone's often with them. Parents are encouraged to keep their contact information up to date in power school. If it's not up to date, you might not get it and you simply need to fill out the form and make the changes that you need to make. Parents are encouraged to communicate with their children's teachers and principals whenever they have questions or concerns. And you can do that at any time, whether that be in person, via phone, or via email. And I think that's the last slide.
Yep.
And I will take any questions you may have, or if you needed, wanted to make comment, you certainly can do that too.
It's a good plan.
It's thorough.
And if we're, and if we're going to make it happen, everybody has to buy into it and make it happen and it will work.
It's thorough. I think we can, we can do this. I think that everybody's getting something here that they want, that they need, that they feel is in the best interest of their children to be. We all know that being here is the best place for these kids to be. That's what people want. We just have to, we have to make it happen. So we have to keep these kids, the doors open and the kids in our, in our school. And it'll be a lot easier for parents. It'll be a lot easier for teachers. It'll be a lot easier for our kids. It's better. So we just, every month, we need to be committed to revising this, relooking at it, looking at what's going on. I think we've done a really good job for a year of, I know things have happened that we, we were in a place last June and July where we didn't find ourselves in that place in November and December, when we did put protections and safety nets in place. Because if we look at and we rely on what the government tells us to do and our mandates and our ordinances, you can see the conflicting information that we have. So I think we've done a really good job looking at where we were at and making those adjustments how we needed them to be. I think with everybody's cooperation, we can, we can pull off a really great year.
This is an action item, so you would need to both move forward on that if that's what you wanted to do.
Yeah, I would agree. It's a, I think a very thorough plan. It's a plan that can, I look at as kind of a compromise. I think both, you know, all parties should be fairly happy with this. And, you know, let's be smart. If you're, if you're not feeling well, stay home and let's make it happen.
This is the last thing too, communicate, parents.
Right, right.
Talk to our staff, teachers, make sure that if there's something that they need to, need to address, we can help them address it if it comes to that point.
I guess my, my concern would just be, you know, when we would talk about making any changes and, and maybe creating a matrix model or something like that so that, that there's a kind of a level, if we're having cases, a lot of cases in the district or whatever, that there's kind of a, a level of where we're going to think about making changes. So I'm not proposing that we come up with that tonight, but I, I think we could look at that and think about that.
And we have those.
Sure. I think that'll be part of the ongoing conversations that we have, yeah.
Yep.
And apparently we're going to do, review this every month.
Yep.
Yeah, so, yeah, we'll be, we'll be putting this in the, on the shelf and not, not doing anything with it. So, yeah.
So that decisions aren't made arbitrarily, you know, either. You've heard of, we've all heard of school districts that have had that happen where somebody wants to call an emergency meeting and make some changes effective immediately. And, and I just don't think that's a good, a good plan. I think that there needs to be.
I don't think that this board has ever acted in that, in that manner yet. And so I, I can't imagine us doing that going forward unless there was something that would completely haywire that we needed to.
Yeah, I think if things were changing that rapidly, I think we'd all be aware of, you know, the scenario.
The whole community would be aware.
The whole community, yeah, everybody I think would be aware of it, so.
As Brad would say, imminent. It's imminent and we need to deal with it. Okay, is there a motion for that?
I move to adopt the back-to-school plan as outlined.
And Erin? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Okay, we're in the plan. Next up is the Juul lawsuit.
Okay. Our attorney, Will Riley, has contacted us as well as all the rest of their school district clients and let us know that there is a mask tort lawsuit, which I guess is akin to a class action lawsuit against the company Juul, who is the vaping product company. This is happening all over the country. I believe there are 13 states that have done the same. One of those lawsuits was actually settled in North Carolina for the sum of $40 million. And then at that point, courts determine how that money is paid out. We have spent an inordinate amount of time on two things over the last couple of years, the first of which is COVID, which was sort of beyond our control, but the second of which has been vaping. And my last years at the high school, I spent far more time in the boys' bathroom than I wanted to, seeing various vaping products kind of streaming out of the top of stalls with four boys in there at the same time, which seemed awful strange when you walked in. And I think I passed that baton successfully on to Josh. He has his own methods for dealing with such things and they've all been very fruitless. And I know that Tom has had some of that at the middle school as well. It's our assertion as a district that this has been an unhealthy lifestyle for kids. And I believe Patton Lee is wrong to have kids doing and marketing in a way which makes it sound as if it's cool and good. And it's become a very big problem. So what you would be acting on here this evening, if you so choose to do so, would be, we would be one of those school districts that is joining this mask tort lawsuit against Juul. And if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
Yeah, I think even, you know, if there's, I see this similar kind of to the, to the cigarette lawsuit where, you know, there's going to be probably some money allocated for education related to anti-vaping, the dangers of vaping for kids. I think we probably see more, more lung damage and, and harm in vaping than, than we have from, from COVID in these kids. So I think it's a smart idea to get into that. If we get some money out of it and, and help kids, even if we can save a few, I think it's a really prudent thing to do. And it's, and it's my understanding it won't cost the school district any money.
It does not cost the district anything. The work is a 47-question questionnaire, which I'll work with the administrative team to answer, but there aren't any attorney's fees and no cost to the district nor to the taxpayer to join this mask tort lawsuit. Zero dollars.
Players will just make a nice, a nice amount if they get some money out of it.
I don't know what will happen, but I think it'll probably take a while. The court system doesn't move very quickly.
And the, the survey doesn't include students, correct?
No, there's no confidential student information that's shared. It's questions in a broader way.
And it's just the, the staff that does that, right? The admin team that will take care of that?
Right, yes.
Okay.
I would make a motion that we pass the, or make a decision to join the mask tort lawsuit against Juul.
Okay, is there a second?
Yeah, second Ben.
Cheryl? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Okay. And we have personnel.
Okay, we have new employment contracts for Matthew Carey, the academic and support behavior pair educator at the middle school, clubhouse teachers Christine Erickson and Laura Wernland, special ed para Cheryl Freer, high school special ed Catherine Magnine, director of school nutrition Jonathan McBride, and a new high school guidance slash district enrollment secretary Alicia Peterson. Extracurricular contracts for Chris Boyd, University Boys Soccer, Leslie Jacobson as Drama Rama coordinator, Kate Weisenbeck, middle school student council advisor, 50%. And then reassignments, Patty Johnson moving from special ed para to academic and behavior support para, and Danielle Holloman moving from food server to cook. And lastly, resignations of Heidi Blumer for van driver and Misty Wishard for van driver. And these are personnel items, so you would need to take an action to accept those changes.
Are we going to have enough van drivers? Be still there. Okay. I make a motion that we accept the personnel action.
Thank you Erin. Second?
Second.
Dale? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion's passed. Is there a need to go closed session?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so we'll, I'll take a motion to go into closed session. Erin?
Second.
Cheryl? Roll call. Erin?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Yes.